All the meetings are ordered. And we're calling the February eleventh meeting. And so if everyone would stand, make an application.
We thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, to be fair to all of our citizens, give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you, and your name is great. Amen.
I'm glad that you stood in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott?
Here.
Ted?
Here.
Donna?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
On the approval, everyone receives the minutes in their package. And if anybody has any questions or corrections during that, we will have approved as presented. And we'll go directly to the new business. We have nothing on your old business. And so our first site plan review is going to be the Strickland Architects with Davis International Incorporated will be representing A C L Wholesale with their leaders, four board for A eight, A rail fourteen. And A B L is seeking the planning commissions with Truville to build a new five thousand one hundred eighty six square foot freezer and convert two thousand two hundred and twenty five square feet of the existing warehouse into a storage space. And they have whoever comes to this microphone, please.
I'm Joseph Strickland, Architect from Davis International.
Oh, I didn't see that. I normally mess up on these. When I have a bad thing, I don't do it's not a bad thing. It's hard to pronounce.
Yes, I understand that.
So it's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
And would you like to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure. A B L has bought the old four-wheel drive building, you know, out on fourteen. And we've been hired to do our part of the contract, which is the cold storage part. Okay. I take Alex Downey and Stuntz who are doing some other work with our distribution for them. So we are proposing to build a new freezer on the exterior of the building. Basically a sixty by eighty structure with a connector. And the interior core we built in the warehouse. One of the reasons we built the freezer on the outside, if you know anything about freezer construction, is you've got to have a special floor with heat in it, insulation in it. So it's hard to build an inside warehouse. So we built it, we're going to build it on the outside. Plus height wise, that four-wheel drive is only about sixteen, seventeen foot to go. They get about twelve, thirteen foot clear. We need twenty foot clear in this building. So that's the reason it's going on the outside. We are building it on the rear of the building, way in the back is part of the site, the north part of the site. And we are two forty-four, four seventeen, two oh nine, and one eighty-two from the setback to our building. We are building it in an area that right now is seven thousand five hundred and forty-two square feet of asphalt which drains into a catch basin. We were building, are building in that space and eliminating that much asphalt. So we are going to build a five thousand one hundred eighty-six square foot structure, which means we're eliminating two thousand three hundred and thirty-five feet of hard surface that we're going to put grass around the new building. And so from a drainage standpoint, we're actually slowing the water down going to the catch basin because we're doing less square foot, so it's coming off the roof. The building is basically, is basically about twenty-two foot high at one end and twenty-four foot high at the other end. And the roof drains off to the west. We will have, we will have insulated metal panels for freezer, which is a metal skin. So it'll be like a panel like this. Either going to be pure white or what they call sandstone, which is a white, white tan. Existing buildings, right now it's a, it's a, it's a pretty generic metal building with a tan skin, like brown tree.
So are you going to be tarving the existing building? What's that? Are you going to be tarving the existing building?
We will be about seven or eighteen inches taller than the existing building.
And how do you know that's true?
We have actually built an eight-foot connector on it and everything. We are reinforcing the roof. Matter of fact, I think they did some work in there. The reinforcing perils, we put eight in C joints between each room. We had a structural engineer out of Pittsburgh that did all the work.
Is all the lot combined as one lot right now?
As far as I know.
Okay. As long as they're all one lot, there's no side, there's no setback issue at all.
Yeah, we all consider they showed this one lot.
Is there a question?
Is there stormwater that's required on this plant? Do you know?
Well, because they are doing, we gave them the stormwater regs, but...
I didn't know if the regs, sometimes they, sometimes they don't let you use asphalt. Some of the newer regs, I'm not up to date on what the new regs are.
We can go over that for them, but since the square footage is reduced, that's the plot.
Yeah, and that's right. Sometimes the regs say that even though you had asphalt, you have to assume that originally it's graph. And I don't know what the regs are. Some communities are going to have to cut in more stormwater out of it, which I think is a little bit unfair. But as long as there's no problems, I think, as long as that, as long as that reg's not in there, I'm not up to date on what the regs are. As long as that reg's not in there, then no problems stormwater.
We'd make a motion if we approve this.
Second?
Roll call, Dan. For the end.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Any questions? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys will begin the project right away? Uh, we have submitted to the state. We're waiting on the state for the permits right now. Soon as we get the state permit, we will start this. Unless we get hit by snow, which we haven't had. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have a re-plat. Jason King, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Thomas and company will be representing property owner Stephen Muswell, please the planning commission with Truville. Re-plat, lot forty-three, forty-four. I'm actually, I'm on my cell. There's a scheduling conflict, as I said. Two is to re-plat, um, forty-three and forty-four, three and a half divisions of the apartment. There's a home that was built that was across the Uden. So in order to make Uden's work, we need to re-plat those two lots. We had the surveys on by environmental design. And that is presented here.
So which, the house is on which lot?
The house is on lot forty-three.
Okay. Now, if you re-plating that, does, so it was built across both lots, kind of?
Yes, more over the Uden.
It was like, it was approached on?
Correct.
Okay. So it puts it in compliance, then?
Yeah. Without re-plating, it would not be in compliance?
But with re-plating, it's in compliance?
Correct.
Right, okay. Well, then, what's on lot forty-four?
Nothing right now.
With re-plating it, put that lot out of the line?
Yes.
Is what we need, we need? This still meets, uh, the minimum, aren't you, anywhere? Isn't it like seventy-seven feet or seventy-five feet or? As long as it meets all the requirements?
Yes, it still meets, uh, the front, we'd be looking.
Is it ninety-two I thought it looked like?
Uh, one ninety. Oh, sorry. Um...
Like I said, it's ninety-two, I think.
Steven? Yes, ninety-two point zero.
Steven, like, correct, that certain elevation, that's correct. Yep.
So the, the front yard is new and front yard is fixed?
Ninety-two point zero, is it old again? Because it looks to me like there's a seventy-three point ten on the outside in dark.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So there'd be the new ten that's in the, the thick bowl? Right. And then, and that's like, so it'd be seventy-three point ten.
Yeah, ninety-two minus that eighteen, which is about seventy-three. And we require that sixty foot. I motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Dan. Please.
Ted?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need that sign? Do you want that sign? Maybe you can go get the right pen. Only to locate a pen and write you on that. So as soon as plans pick one, we'll prepare them.
Thank you. I go on the radio.
Okay, go on, by one.
No, I, I, we're, we're busy. I was told not to bring that pen back.
I want one of them after this.
I want one of them.
Five percent of me is going to watch that. You have to sign it.
Maybe you can go get the right pen. Only to locate a pen and write you on that. So as soon as plans pick one, we'll prepare them.
Thank you. I go on the radio.
Okay, go on, by one.
No, I, I, we're, we're busy. I was told not to bring that pen back.
I want one of them after this.
I want one of them. I was told not to bring that pen back.
I want one of them after this.
I want one of them.
You have a re-plat, right? That's what you should know.
Oh, can I sign this?
You can sign it, but the re-plat's what's going to get recorded.
Oh, okay.
And the deal comes from the re-plat once it's recorded.
Okay, next site plan review will be Flynn Oliver, who is standing with Truville to demolition of building at four three three, nine hundred, nine hundred, and built a twelve thousand square foot warehouse. Floyd, will you be presenting for the, uh, for Flynn Oliver Group?
Uh, Flynn Oliver Group is requiring a storied warehouse for their assets, semi-trailers, car haulers, drag racing equipment, things like that. So we're proposing to eliminate a building that's really outdated and start a new portable warehouse.
Are you done on that old building?
Yes.
And this is C four, it's not already commercial, so there's nothing to bother with that. The existing house is staying, then?
There is none.
Or is this an existing building, okay. What is that, a working building?
Old warehouse.
Old warehouse.
From Earl Fordyce.
Okay, Earl Fordyce. You don't have any, there's no restrictions as far as having new buildings or paying the merchant property, anything as far as, yeah, and about as far as business of new buildings, there isn't any restrictions on that? And if the front setback's fine, and everything seems to be, is there a requirement? What is building being demolished? Is it a house or?
Both buildings. One of the block buildings being demolished.
Oh, okay, a block building.
I made a motion that we approve this, but it's on site, but... Start right away, yeah?
Tomorrow.
Yesterday, somebody wanted it.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
I have a motion, ask.
Thank you.
Are you going to start?
Yes.
Okay, the next site plan review is Linda Winter, please, if you could, please, Linda, one minute, please. Bean. Oh, sorry about that. She got a ward. Oh, I'm sorry, I know that.
She's trying to get...
I, I...
I'm also recommending you guys.
I know.
Get up in there, while.
Good thing you did that today.
Okay. Hello, Rob Scherrich here, representing A P L Properties. First, before we get started, I just, uh, like the idea that you guys are still cautious about stormwater management. So we are having a lot of water run on the north side of town through the Mill Creek watershed. And it's just good to know that stormwater's in conversation. So, because that is a, a weekly, um, chore, to clean out grates and make sure that water's running freely through the lake. So I appreciate that. It's been, it's been a little bit of hassle. But with that said, uh, you know, we are here to re-plat lot twenty-nine once again and create lot thirty-nine.
Okay, is that what you asked me to do, Mary Ann?
It's, lot thirty-nine is, as soon as you're on the cul-de-sac on Back Bay Drive, it is on the right-hand side. On it? No, it's right.
If I was back there, you're going to do it?
It's right here. Is it the cul-de-sac? Is it the last one on the street?
Oh, okay.
Actually, lot D R, something out there.
Okay.
So we have this lot, uh, lot D R, still out there.
What's the minimum distance you're about to set the road?
Forty feet to forty feet. So that's it? Yeah, forty, forty, twenty, thirty-seven, yeah. C fourteen, actually, C fourteen on the curve, on the arch, forty point seven eight. So, um, they give you forty, forty foot frontages. They open up quite a bit in their lot, about quite a half acre, it's a nice lot. Blockout basement falls off to the, uh, to the creek. Um, it's actually kind of interesting, so lot twenty-nine, one thing we do guarantee our homeowners back there, is side yard restrictions are only five foot in this area of town. But we actually have a, a side yard restriction on the, the very back lot that's showing lot twenty-nine right now. It's a fifty-foot side yard restriction up against lot, uh, our new lot thirty-nine. So we're there to protect our homeowners, um, so that nobody could, not only build their main house, but can't build any structures whatsoever within fifty feet of this lot. It's kind of, you know, we're taking a step above and beyond for protecting homes back there. So that's already been recorded on a previous plat. But that, that, uh, rear yard is, uh, it's actually considered a side yard, but it's actually behind lot thirty-nine.
So is what, if you're a lot building?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, there's definitely, definitely, um, a very nice, um, progression, momentum in, in the quality of homes. Also, um, I think there are a lot of individuals that are, uh, business owners actually on that street that are moving into town. That people have sold their business or are still business owners and they're able to, um, have a more disposable income and, and, you know, and also, uh, spend money and energy in town. I think it'll be an asset to the community, so.
I think we just approved one of them tonight, correct, we will?
Oh, yeah, he's back there as well on a separate home, as I said. So there's, there's, um, we're not getting into detail, um, there's a lot of people back there that are decision makers and when they move into town, um, they, uh, they bring momentum with them. So, and I think the CRA's, uh, well, the CRA is totally the driving force behind us. So, um, that's definitely given an extra momentum. In addition to that, homeowner stopped me this morning and, um, heard that was on the agenda tonight and started talking and, um, you know, his own lot, he asked me too, how much, he thought that his lot appreciated because of the CRA and it's roughly about thirty, thirty-five thousand when he purchased it. So just, just huge increases with big values, uh, in general on, on the land, so.
You know, just a thought that I had when I was back there was, I was back there last year, I don't know if it was C ever four or whatever, but anyway.
It's amazing transformation from, 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 actually, and that's what, uh, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Flynn owns our own building that we own. I, I'm excited to see that go. I've tired, I mean, that building has cleaned and repaired and it, it needs to go as far as the demolition out. It's, it's nice to see properties. Um, and that's how the street was. It was over eighty, eighty, um, truckloads worth of debris that we hauled out of that back street, just to put that street in. So, um, yes, the land, you know, we, we did our, did some cleanup, um, but, um, there was also, uh, a lot of value there as well that nobody else saw. But, but yeah, it, it was neglected, so.
Well, I just now, lucky to be back in that area, I used to wonder, wow, I wonder how many houses would go back there, but we're really not playing that.
Yeah, we have five, five lots are still remaining right now.
This is, this is a nice seven year in Back Bay. And it seems like yesterday, just yesterday, that we used to walk to the top of Back Bay and there was nothing out there but new up in the air.
Yeah.
And it was so great, since we, you know, throw a few twigs in there, it's like, oh my gosh, now.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we get a little, little, uh...
I just picture that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, um, I, I remember from, I actually, actually, a quick little story is, uh, I have a picture, uh, from when we bought the property and the, and the street was so bad and the curbs were so overgrown with moss, that I wrote my name out of a power washer, you know, in the street and sent my dad a picture, you know, and I said, and I said, you know, please clean me, you know, and it was, that's how bad the curbs were. I mean, it was just night and day from the difference between, I power washed the curbs myself, we pulled mattresses off the street, um, that people dumped, um, among other things that I won't mention, but there was a lot of garbage back there. Yeah, it was, it was actually cinder block, actually the cinder block, somebody put blocks across the street, the blocks that we drove back there. Um, yeah, it was very interesting. So, yeah, and we sold our very first house back there and, um, and then, then, you know, the momentum, now we're down to five blocks on that street, so.
I put the foundations in on the original, original, all the way out in the front, very first condo of the Schuler's, so. It's really, I stopped coming the day I graduated high school and it would rain for a week straight and I helped dig them out of the foot with Dad.
And Mr. Schuler actually, um, when I first purchased, uh, he was, uh, one of the first contacts I made. He was still in the area at the time, I don't know if he is or not, but, uh...
That was ninety-one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can still have the stamp.
So, yeah, so very interesting, um, I know that, um, cities momentum, I mean, there's momentum all, all around town, but, um, but there's, you get out of town and you talk to other people and they talk about the excitement of Columbia. So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not just us having conversations, it's everywhere. So, but, uh, yeah, so this lot, um, we'll probably be, just starting, just giving you an idea once this re-platted, probably starting, um, building this home, it's a twenty-six-hundred square foot ranch, walkout basement, nice home. Um, that's probably going to be our largest one back there.
Make a motion, we approve the re-plat that's submitted. Second.
Roll call, please.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can write a quick signature?
Yeah.
Would you, huh?
Oh, please.
Yeah, yeah.
I can draw a blank tomorrow. You know more about than I do.
Okay. Next place and review is Linda Winter. Sorry, I tied you.
Yes, Jeff Harris, okay. I'm Linda, this is Dan Brown. Um, we didn't really know we'd have to do this, we just came in to get a sign permit, you know, and all of a sudden, I didn't know that.
I didn't even realize she had to do this. So, before I forget, um, she's going to put in the new, um, used clothing company.
It's not me personally, it's actually brought through the church.
Church, okay, I thought you were going to...
No, no. It's a, it's a consignment, only clothing. And it's through the church, it's not, it's a, the women's group from the church.
Okay, that's nice, you know, very good. And I'm the first United Methodist Church, because we have seven staff members, so, yeah. And so tell us a little bit about all your, your handles.
Well, basically, clothing, men, women, persons drawing to, consignment, no furniture, no trinkets, no, no...
Or Steve closed her shop across the street and, you know, what, yeah, she, she's glad that we're trying to do, keep it going.
Okay.
She was very gracious in giving us a lot of her, you know, equipment, rags, but it worked out well. The space we're going to occupy is where the preschool used to be, the bathroom, where Dr. Drew backed that way. So there's three rooms to the back. There's no change in the structure whatsoever in the occupants here, the rooms, you know, changing.
Where we're putting the signs, too, there has been the signs for the nursery school when they were there.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve this. Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Last question.
I just had a question, when do we pay for the sign permit or how does that work?
We might have to ask, um, you know?
And just come on. It's a little relative math. That's true, Dave.
So we come in and talk to him. Thank you.
Next place and review is Elville Brewing, representing the, 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 Ryan Gray, and please the planning commission with Truville to open and operate a three thousand seven hundred and forty square foot house. And it's utilized on a fifteen building, most of it has forty tires for sixteen, A rail fourteen, uh, that's part of the yard.
That's correct.
And this is a, a whole yard structure.
It is, it's structured, correct, yeah.
And, um, located on the south side of Route fourteen. So it's over where the...
Opposite side of the golf course.
Right.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I would like to start with personal note, I grew up in Columbia, I lived here until I was twenty-two-ish. Um, I moved about an hour away, I still only live about an hour away, but I'm really excited to meet back. I got to say hi to Ted, who I've known for a long, long time. I'm excited for the potential of bringing a business back into town that I grew up in and loved and continue to love, so, wanted to get that part out of the way. We are actually asking for, or actually requesting a site change from a...
for sixteen, three round fourteen, uh, that's part of the yard.
That's correct.
And this is a, a whole barn structure.
It is, it's structured, correct, yeah.
And, um, located on the south side of Route Fourteen. So, it's over where the.
Opposite side of the golf course.
Right.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I would like to start with personal note. I grew up in Columbia. I lived here until I was twenty-two-ish. Um, I moved about an hour away. I still only live about an hour away, but I'm really excited to meet back. Um, I got to say hi to Ted through, I've known him for a long, long time. Um, I'm excited for the potential of bringing a business back into town that I grew up in and loved and continue to love. So, wanted to get that part out of the way. Um, we are actually asking for, or actually requesting a site change from a previously approved, uh, planning commission review that you approved on nine eleven in two thousand eighteen.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, that was, uh, for proposed site on South Avenue, the, uh, old bowling alley. It was also under a different proposed name. Um, we went through some trademark issues and now have a, a, a current and approved trademark as well as a, a current and approved A one C permit that we can transfer to the new address. Um, the address is, as you mentioned, owned by Firestone Homestead LLC. Um, it's worth noting, the, the building itself was built in the seventies. Um, it's not a historical site, although we want to keep the historical significance of the area and don't plan on marring out in any way. So, our intention is to treat it as if it were a historical site, whether it is or not.
Okay, there again, with that there, um, it's the one we, it is only about, sure about.
Absolutely, yes. If you go in and go as far to the, it's the ru, building as far to the right as possible to get yet. This actually faces a much, much older building.
Right.
Uh, we could probably speak more adequately about that, but, yeah, this is a, a building, a whole barn built in the seventies.
Okay, got it. And are you going to cross that creek?
That, that's still kind of up for discussion. Um, I say up for discussion because we're still kind of open to options. Uh, we don't have any intentions locked in with anything. Um, we recognize that the, uh, the driveway is owned by Firestone Homestead LLC, but used by the building family. We don't really want to encroach on, on, on that relationship. So, we're exploring other options on creating a main entrance. Um, you can see on one of the diagrams that there's an access road that's being considered, uh, connecting to where the old barn was moved over by the, the lane.
Brian, with, with, for intents and purposes, would you prefer not, not being opened up by using, uh, the other driveway?
That's the intention, absolutely. Um, like I said, we, we recognize the historical significance of all of that area and don't have any intention of trampling on it. Um, you know, we, we recognize that the buildings don't officially own the driveway, of course, but that doesn't mean much to us. We, we prefer to keep that, their domain, to keep that their area.
We'll be in there to serve.
Exactly right, yeah.
We'd love to see that, Rob, but you don't want it to be right there.
Exactly.
If I could say, Firestone Homestead is, in the, we're in the engineering phases of designing that, the road comes from the west which goes to next.
Which would be the ingress of.
Yes.
But it's, it's P four, right? That, that's sort of, it's, it's in the requirement of where it's at.
I mean, we discussed it as one of the intents of, of what we're there with.
Right. My only concern is, I'd be, I caution, um, it being an agricultural building, you have to go to the state to get your being, because you're going to, you're going to put people in it and it might have been originally designed as an ag structure, which has a lot lower safety factors on it. So, make sure when you apply the safety, address that issue. That's not for this board, uh, but if coming in for an ag building over to a commercial structure, make sure you keep that coordinated properly.
Mm-hmm.
But, I, that.
If any of their answer, you may have beer for that.
Yeah.
We'll name a beer after everyone.
It's like a bean beer. God, I was reading your, uh.
Right, so briefly, on, on, a little further explanation on that, the, the, the marketing and identity plan is so that we're not, uh, we recognize and respect that there is already operating and successful group of in the area. Um, and our identity in marketing is, is to be something different than that, to offer a different option, to offer something different. Um, and the, the name is kind of a, a tongue-in-cheek jab at the community of brewing, um, where, where there's this idea that everybody is all on the same team and ours is, of course, a lighthearted and, and tongue-in-cheek jab at that with the, the name, Old Will.
I like that.
Thank you.
Is that your, right?
Um, that's.
Collaboration.
Uh, I'm going to call it a collaboration. I don't want, I don't want my partners to upset if I say.
Yeah, you're recording.
Yeah.
Do you have any further questions?
I make a motion to approve that submission.
Second.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Have a good day.
Thank you so much for listening to you.
And our next place in review is for David Giff, a business agency, L L Cities, and seeks planning permission approval to build a new office building, support his insurance business, have one fifty-two car drive by a sand farm, and is somebody to save a gift? Um, well, you've been called.
Baker Bednar? That's the architect, right?
Are you okay?
Yeah, it's on the back, but that's, Baker Bednar drawing.
I, I am the property owner, the, the lot that he's buying. I haven't talked today. I didn't even know he was on the meeting tonight, but, um, I could answer any questions?
Well, this is, this is for a new construction of a new.
Family, yeah, I think.
And that should be, actually, that Baker Bednar should be here, the architect. To answer this question.
Yes.
So, without having representatives.
We'll have to.
I make a motion to leave table?
Yes.
Twenty girls, roll call, papering, be under way.
Ted?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'd like to ask, so we'll just notify him for next time. And is John, please? Oh, yeah. John? Hi, John.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay.
Well, we're having an additional loan review and John is here to seek planning approvals, um, move towards his, um, plan, so it's an additional signing to the property of Mr. Jordan, seven forty, or five forty-seven, or something. So, how are you coming?
Okay.
Okay, um, I like your picture. I don't know what your interest in you.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's what I think. And that's it.
You kind of have everything there. You, should we just, do you ask questions or what do you want to, how do you want it?
Um.
It was, we supposed to create an accurate drawing showing setback structures, parking number five. Do we have any?
Yes.
That's it.
We try to do it.
Yes. The sketch of the, uh, entranceway isn't really exact, um, because the guy, I, I, well, I'm not good enough artist to be able to draw in the way he was going to do that.
Look, that's, they have the.
Yeah.
The pictures are there. Yeah, that's, that's kind of the work the guy does that would be making that, so. The, 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 yeah, you would have people sitting on the wall there.
How do you do that?
Okay.
I thought I said, now, they make them a full block and then.
They, they always told me that, um, they take a picture and then cut some bricks and then number them.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Then they're up here, they then.
Then we can put them together, right.
Really?
Yeah.
They put it together, let's imagine.
Then, um, the sign would be, I don't know if you see the one with the, the Ohio University, isn't it? Yeah, the sign would be kind of like the Ohio, the bricks would stick out from the wall.
I would just caution yourself on making sure you don't have anything that kids could vandalize and break off.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of things down there to vandalize.
It seems big and bulky.
The, um, the one thing the guy said to me was there was no way he'd be able to get those little people made by October even, yeah. But he would be able to get the sign part all done, so when we build it.
He put that on later.
Yeah, yeah, he said he could come back and put the people in. Trying to build this parking lot and hide it so no one sees it's in there.
Is there, there's obviously sidewalks out there. You just have like a rumble strip that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it, yeah.
With the proposal, the third one knows it's there.
Yeah, there's another color version of it over here.
The wall, walling up, be the one on the wall and then to one on the entrance off the standing.
Yeah, that's the color. Yeah, there we go. The, um, I, I looked at the North Main thing and with the light out there in front of, by Newton's, I just was like, this is going to be a disaster.
John, like, without looking, uh, the width here, two cars each.
Twenty-four feet, I think it is, yeah.
So, two could sit.
So, he said, it, it, if you go twenty-four, twenty, and twenty, which is what? Can you math my head?
Sixty-four.
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 Twenty-four, forty-four, sixty-four, right?
Yep.
Sixty-four. He's got an eighty-eight foot wide lot, so that fits no problem. Um, the depth of the lot now is a hundred and sixty feet, right?
Yep.
And I don't know if you're smug, I don't know if you'll fit on that lot, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty.
How, how deep was it?
A hundred, now you'll fit, okay. So, you got a hundred foot of parking, right?
Right, I think it's, I had it set like thirty feet off of, uh, wow, what is now the street?
Right, so you're a hundred, a hundred foot deep and you got a hundred and sixty foot, not a problem with that. So, all things are fit, what correction?
What was the, uh?
We step back, um, conditional, what, 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 something there. Quasi-public recreation area, which is twelve sixty-six. I've been through most of these halls already once with them. It seems like it's long to follow through.
I mean, I, you know, being the new guy on the block here.
No, I've been through the books a couple times and I, I want to clarify what. No, we'll, we'll go back through them again and make sure that that meets everything, but from my initial run through, it seemed like I didn't really make sure some was wrong.
That was, uh, one of my concerns and, uh, drainage was another one of my concerns.
There's, um, everything in the property ties into a eight-inch culvert that runs underground back to, um, man.
Okay.
And I was going to tie into that and have a catch base and then the.
So, you have provisions.
Yeah, I didn't draw it on, I shouldn't have done that. Wasn't even thinking about it.
So, this goes through at twelve sixty-six point ten point A. The very first one is, is eighty-three, if not more than two access, accessways shall be anyone's street. Says accessway not less than thirty foot in width at the sidewalk line, now the minimum side radius is twenty-five feet. We don't have a sidewalk line, so that's not a problem. Seven, is onsite circulation, so be designed to make possible adequate fire, peace protection. Okay, you got central drive down the center, right, and fire in the ground in there. Eight is paved off street parkings, service areas are part, each parking space will be ten by twenty, which looks really hard. Um, ten foot in width, the parking areas of penetrous vehicles and two inch out of the twenty foot. So, it's like, you got all of it.
Sorry.
A eleven, there's some A eleven. A twelve, there's some A twelve. And then all of B, B. Um, loudspe, no loudspeakers, no nuisance, no lights have created nuisance.
I'm misunderstanding that you are proposing hours too, right?
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care what those are, anyone, you can do whatever you want.
Well, no, but I, I'd like to hear what you.
I think we were, here's the problem in the mornings, okay? I'll go out there at six or something and start watering and there's people walking through that, that, you know, they'll just walk through, so.
Now, are those, like, do you think they're walkers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and then, so I had on a seven AM to seven PM. But the one thing I didn't want to do, I also had a time of like, I think April, I can't remember what's, what did that?
May first through October thirty-first.
There it is, May first through October thirty-first. But there's times like in, like, well, first of all, the Hippolyne Foundation meets in the building in like November and December, things like that, so I.
You're very long with yourself.
Okay.
Get here.
And then the other thing is, uh, yeah, there's, there's things, or there's, like, for instance, I've had six calls in the last two weeks for garden clubs. So, there may be garden clubs who want to take tours, you know.
Again, I mean, if you're, if they're calling for you, and you're giving them permission, you, you're doing whatever, it's your language.
Okay, okay.
So, what's, what's the hours of the park? Isn't the park like daylight to dawn?
Well, I was going to go seven to seven, is what I'd put.
Is that what I put on there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with daylight to dawn, that way.
And that way you're covering the winter, that you don't get people.
Yeah, I, I actually like that better.
That way you don't get specific about anything.
Okay.
All you need to do is argue what time daylight is, what time's off.
Right, right.
So, you put a number on it?
Yeah, yep.
If you put a number on it, you can restrict that.
Uh-huh.
If, you know, because your family's, yeah, that, and so on.
Yeah, but in the middle of June, it's like at ninety-thirty, right, walking there to seven o'clock in, right.
Yeah, October.
Give me the flexibility to say, hey, you know what, you need to leave this property now. It's, it's duckish.
Uh-huh.
It's duckish.
There was also one time talk of the women's club, they use it every year for, for the fundraiser. There was actually talk one time of having something after dark in their dinner.
Your, that's your.
Okay.
You're talking on the public.
Okay, okay, okay.
The only time work, really time to do, take care of is the public.
You're, you're quasi-public. You're, if you, if you restrict the hours for quasi-public use, okay, which would be the daylight hours, okay?
Yes.
And anything you do personally, it's your, it's still your backyard.
Be out there two o'clock in the morning, you're not just writing your day.
You may, you may hear from the neighbors that the neighbors bitching, I'm sorry, complaining about you.
Right, right, okay.
That was exactly your question.
Anybody have any further questions, John?
I don't want, and you may as well.
The, the big, the big map, I don't, I don't know if, I'm just trying to look through if you guys had it. It just, yeah, there you go, well, okay, this is a bigger, but it just shows you where, where it's, yeah, and where the parking lot would be.
The only thing I have to note in here is that, that it's one of the items with no lighting to create a nuisance. So, any lighting that you do put, you have to make sure you, what I recommend is you have a zero lot line, like, um, so what it says, if any lights you put in, that that light, that light cannot actually shine on other people's property. When, when that light gets to that lot line, it'll be a zero lot line.
Yeah, I see. You plan on light in the parking lot or not?
Um, I didn't, I didn't want to get to a point where there was so much like light pollution up there.
I do, because we need to, if your hours are only like daylight hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
There, there, um, the, the drawing with the, uh, parking lot on it, I was trying to put a hedge down both sides so that when people pull in there, if lights are on, they don't shine into people's windows, even though I own both houses on each side of it, I'd still.
All right, but I think, um, that, that you, you heard what we were asking of you at the last meeting and, and I think that this is very good common ground to give your neighbors the protection that, that started this. Um, it gives the public the ability to use the park that you wanted to create for them. Um, I think it's win-win for everyone. Uh, I, I re, I think that this is the epitome of working together, uh, and, and I, I think Uh, and, and I, I think it's, it's perfect. I mean, no one's ever gonna be completely happy. They're not gonna be completely happy to have to do this. Neighbors aren't gonna be completely happy that it's there. I think it's a good compromise for everyone and you are doing and making the investment, um, to protect vis- visibly, um,
Or the neighbor.
I have to stare at the parking lot. It's in my, I have one in my front yard. Um, you're, you're, you're making me intent to block it from view. So, I mean, I'd be happy to look at what you've done. I think, I think it looks very nice. Uh, it only looks like a parking lot. It looks like a garden.
That would be the hope. The other thing is there is a walkway that takes you from the parking lot, you see it there in one corner, takes you right into the garden, kinda letting people know. There's, yeah, this way. Uh, there was something else, I forgot what it was, but.
So there, there will still be a couple of processes to this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because, um, if this is voted to move forward tonight, then we have to set up a public hearing. Uh, and we'll go through that, which would be a mark of the note?
Mark's in. There's one other thing I, I would recommend that we go through. It says, um, there should not be more than one identification sign in body in each row. So that one sign, one side can do whatever you want. Only one side should actually, if you're, if you give it a name, you can only throw it on one side.
Oh, that, that was actually the plan. It was gonna be on the left side as you're driving in.
I just don't wanna get hung up on someone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad you, because I, I think that drawing actually makes it look like there's two.
Long as one, do you have on both sides, just don't give the name on one?
That was another point I wanted to make, if this is possible, and I'm more than willing to pay for this. Down at, when you come up from, um, let's say Route fourteen and you're coming south into town there. Here's what's happening. People are pulling in, I'm, I'm, I'm going out there like this summer and this is, I'm seeing this and I'm kinda like, not that I have short fuse or anything, but people are pulling, people are pulling down Boll Memorial and, and the Pruitt's and the Flinns and everybody. I don't know why, but they're being really nice. They're coming home and they're just kinda waiting and there's people parked there. And I said this to Lance, I would like to put a, just a nice tin, you know, metal sign or something down there that says, "The garden's straight ahead." So that people don't pull in Boll Memorial. And then maybe it's Stanton, a sign to the right signaling that's down there's where the gardens are. What's, is that something you guys cover or is that something I'm, I don't know what I'm, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I've apologized, even though the Flinns keep telling me, "Stop apologizing." But I keep apologizing to the Flinns and everybody back there about the fact that people are blocking their private drive. I would like to bring that to an end. I think a sign would do that.
Even with a small sign?
Yeah, something like, you know, like a, like a no parking, you know, either this side of it.
You're going the wrong way. Well, yeah, but there's nothing else to, to show that you're, you, you do care.
Yeah.
You know, it might, it may be, uh, alleviate a little less laundry.
Yeah, yeah. I, I.
Less laundry and it's gonna be.
You have no idea how nice everybody back there on Boll Memorial is. You know, and I, like I say, I've gone back there a million times trying to apologize and Mrs. Flynn keeps yelling that means they're coming to apologize, so. Yeah. But.
I have, I have one, one last, I mean, one of the things that we had discussed, um, was replanning this so that all of the, the garden land is in one class.
Right.
That, that's what this was used of, this is a part of the proposal, is replanning the one.
Yes, it, I began to keep doing the survey on that and actually we were hoping that, that this is gonna have to go through you guys too, probably, I guess. I wouldn't steal some property from those houses I own on Stanton to give.
We, we would, we would have to do what, what we've done here.
Okay.
With a couple others, do replat.
Yeah.
But we, that whole area will just need replatted, but I think in doing so, it will give you what we need with the setbacks and everything else to make this fit.
Yeah.
And it will also, down the road, when we're having any discussions, anything you're adding, whatever it may be, we've got one thing to discuss. Rather than, hey, is that property, that's the apartment's property?
Right.
Would, this would be all, all in one piece and it makes, makes that conversation go away.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, as you see on there, it goes back out onto, uh, North Main, there's a little spot. The, that's actually belongs to one of those houses there and they were gonna steal it so that someday I could put a walkway coming in off North Main, so people wanting to walk, coming down North Main, you can just walk through the place. Was kinda the idea. I don't want these kind of sievers.
Very handy.
That's right, that's right. Yep. There's an open, I call it a field there. It's not a field, it's, it's a patch of grass, but I was hoping.
Then, then runs back behind, well, actually in front of.
Yep, yep.
Indoor pavilion.
That's right.
Now, this, this is what we wanted to see originally.
Uh-huh.
And I, our, our intention, because we're here right now, was never to cause problems for you, us, the community, or anyone else.
What I didn't wanna cause a problem with is I had no idea I was not in compliance. I thought, when Lance called me to come to a December meeting, it was about building a parking lot. Which is what I've been saving for, for the last three years to do.
Well.
And that's what got us to where we are, but.
But this is gonna fit. It works.
Yep.
Um, you have the, the legacy aspect of what you're wanting to build there. Um, I mean, that, I, and everyone loves it. When I always speak at the high school the other day and, uh, I had to, to talk with the juniors and seniors about what we do with local government. And then we were talking about how boring government is and I said, "Do you guys have any questions?" And they were all like, "No." So I know you do. I said, "The question is, when are you allowed to start playing basketball again?" I hit the garden and they're like, "Yeah." So I, I, I know, I mean, this, this has affected everyone. We, we still have to do it the right way and this is the right way. And I think whenever this is asked and done, um, first of all, there is, there's a, a point of reference to look at in the future for anyone else. Um, that this is the right way to do it. This is how it ends and it will lead to everyone. Uh, and it makes your neighbors happy, um, that, that they, uh, have some protection and know that we're ending with what everyone wants. So I, I think, I think this is a good place to be. We still have to go through a public hearing and any neighbors that, that weren't happy maybe could come. Uh, but I don't know how, looking at this, they couldn't be happy with what would be a next step.
It's, it's funny you said that, what you did, 'cause I got an email today from this disc jockey, it's on Sirius XM radio. He's a sixties on six guy, so I, I don't know if anyone listens to that, but he goes around the country, visits all fifty states every year. So he was on the website today wanting to know why these, well, he emailed me wanting to know why these gardens are closed, 'cause he wanted to come here this summer. And I said, "Well, we're trying to get it back open." And I said, you know, he said, "Well, I'll contact you again in June, 'cause I'm gonna be in Ohio in July and I wanna come there." So it was kinda like.
Well, you, you can come anyway, 'cause it's, it's only the public aspect, aspect of it that we have a problem. But it, it, it's really, really neat that the exposure that it had and the reach that it has, it, it's proof that you, you did a very good job. You just want it to fit, and that is what.
My one, my one comment is, um, I pay attention with a public meeting is what you're gonna do for a finished pavement service.
Uh, yeah, blacktop.
Blacktop. So there's a couple of different ideas and I don't know if you've thrown out there, 'cause it's all based on budgets, but I went down to the courthouse, eat here tonight and listen. And they had something kinda neat, their, their, their back parking lot. It's, um, it's more of a, it's a combination between like a grass and like a stone paper.
You mean the grass comes up through it?
Yeah.
Right, I know what you mean.
And I don't know the cost and anything like that, but, um, I would just, at least look at all the avenues.
Yeah.
When you come to that, come to the meeting, if, if the, if the neighbor asks about that, you say, "Well, I've looked at this, this is a cost factor, this, this is what makes the best sense for me."
Uh-huh.
Go ahead and get that.
Actually, since the day after the last meeting, someone called and wanted to pay for the whole parking lot, so. And they were gonna be, they wanted to, to price and getting ahold of the blacktop people, so.
Good. Whatever, as long, as long as you got, as long as it's been thought on, you have an, you can do whatever you want, they're just.
I, I think this is very, very nice.
Well, if someone's willing to help, we'd like that, because that was your dream, is your dream.
Yeah.
And, um, so I think the whole thing is really nice that it can be pleasant for everybody.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, set the, uh, hearing for the conditional voting for the Hippolyne Garden, five four seven North Main Street.
You can move into the roll call, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, a little, uh, stand there on last beat.
What?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
You're good.
Very good.
So.
Are we, are we allowed to ask the question?
Sure.
Uh, this would be to John. John, um, last time you were here, um, there was like two different ways this could go. We could make it, or you could make it public and we could have people from all over the place coming, or you could keep it the way it has been. As neighbors, and I speak for many, many of the neighbors, um, what's your thoughts?
Um, I feel like if we're the nicest place in America, then we should not be squawking from the end of the day. Okay?
I, I, I don't honestly see a reason, you know, maybe say this for a public hearing, but I don't see any reason not to. I mean, I was pretty vocal last meeting. I've, I've seen your plans. Um, you, you've seen if I didn't like something, I would tell you. And I, I don't see any problem with it.
Can I ask another question? Um, how many spaces in the parking lot?
Nineteen.
It is eighteen nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah.
But it's walled. Uh, Deckard, you, I can show you this.
No, that's fine. No, because we've had more than twenty-five cars on the street at one time. So we don't have enough parking lot to take care of all the people.
Right.
Well, it would be enough to get my vote.
It requires the minimum of ten in the, the conditional zoning permit. So that's, that's how many he is, he is required, I believe, in there. I think it says it in there. So he, he's almost doubled what the initial requirements are. And that's what this public meeting is for in a month, for everyone to have their complete opinions and, and statements out there. So not, not that we're trying to decline it, but you will have, you'll have, you'll have a chance definitely. That's what this, that's what this public meeting is for.
Well, we had questions in the neighborhood about whether it was gonna stay the way it was, nice, quiet, not a lot of traffic, not a lot of people. And now it's going to be other hours, opened up to a lot of people, a lot of traffic and.
I don't wanna have this conversation tonight.
That's fine.
I, 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 every one of your neighbors, uh, will get a notification, um, and a invitation and I would encourage them to come and speak beyond the record.
Right.
To do this comment. And, and this is, this is true for, uh, it may be something to think about between now and, and the public meeting. By meeting the guidelines that we asked specifically to meet, um, by building a parking lot, I believe there, there's a chance that you put that parking lot there and it's, it's, somebody comes in there and it's filled up. That may alleviate the problem that you had in the first place. That may help alleviate that. Because if I drive by, if I'm, if I'm a local and I drive by and there's sixteen cars in there, seventeen cars, there's a good chance I'm not gonna pull in there. I hope that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because that means there's eighteen other people or couples enjoying what he's offering. I'm hoping that alleviates part of the reason that. I would also say that if there was. You know, and I can.
Paper is nineteen.
For that money. I'd rather it not be parked on the road. I'd rather not drive down there and see ten cars parked on the road and eighteen cars in the parking lot. Do you, do you think that's gonna make?
Does anyone actually think it's going back to what happened that ten days of hell in July? 'Cause it's not going back to that. That was ended when I switched the website today by appointment and it ended the problem. And we shut, actually I shut it down and everything calmed down and I opened it back up the last one. And all of it, it went right back to the way it used to be. But everyone's all in fear of these four hundred people a day showing up like I had for ten days and.
I think that's the basis for the hearing.
Yeah, yeah. You got it.
But you're good.
Yeah.
About the hearing, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. How was productive? Nice, tonight? I think everyone's still coming. And does anyone have some admission here, have any comments?
Um, me, um, not really planning really this, but just to call the end of really this. I got a call last Thursday from Y S U asking if I would do an interview with the Atlantic Magazine, which is a national, uh, publication. And, uh, they were driving across Midwest looking at swing states, uh, in national politics. And, uh, they were wanting to interview people that were in office and they asked if I would do an interview with this reporter. But he met in City Hall here at four o'clock and, uh, we went to Homestead for dinner afterward. And so we spent about three hours talking about local politics, national politics and the state of things in Ohio and the Mahoney Valley. And I thought it was neat, but it was called the end of all, uh, the fact that they, they thought of us, that they called you there. On the radar, yeah.
You know, it's, it was, I feel like it's a dumber place to be. And, I mean, everybody was like, not everybody, but everybody is more partisan than they used to be.
One is it was just me. The, 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 one of the reporter, uh, was, was a professor from, from Y S U and he was, uh, asking, one of the questions they asked me was whether they thought that attitudes were different here and it's north of here. I'm referring to Youngstown and I, I thought he was talking about politics, but I understood it was a political question. He goes, "No, no, I mean, like, everyone's nicer." And I said, "Well, you know, we're like the nicest place in America." And then the reporter goes, "Well, maybe he was from England. He flew here just to do this interview." And he goes, "You're the nicest place in America?" He goes, "I need a copy of that too, that's going in the story." It was pretty neat.
Yeah, it's, it's a neat place to be.
Yeah.
I think. And does anybody in the public have anything they would like to say? Good, bad, indifferent? I had something real quickly. This is just very briefly. Hi, everyone, I'm Susan Drola. And I grew up on Stanton Avenue and, um, there's a row of us here that are either on Stanton or parents own homes on Stanton or down Stanton. And we're deeply impacted by this, you know, I understand Mr. Flickin that we're to hold our comments until that public meeting. But, uh, there's a lot of sadness about the peace and tranquility that will be forever changed on Stanton Avenue. And, um, I've written my thoughts down while I've been listening. There's a lot of good that John does. I just wish he picked a public place to put it, not, I mean, for, not a residential.
Yeah, it's completely, I, I don't wanna stop you, but I want you to, I'm not trying to silence you. I just know that, um, there could be a whole lot more impact to, to what you were saying as a neighborhood and a neighbor during a public hearing, um, than tonight. You, I, 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 I don't know if you were here at the last meeting or not.
No.
I'm, I'm not known for holding back.
Right. We don't want your voice to be a footnote to the meeting. We want it to be the main part of the next meeting.
Thank you.
So that, that's kind of what we're giving at. So that, if you say again, we're gonna have you say it all again, okay? We want you to have the full audience, just not the footnote at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, we, I, I said this at the last meeting. I, I'm sitting here today because, uh, the banquet center was built across the street from my house in Firestone Park. When I moved in, it was a clubhouse, there was no parking lot in my front yard and blah, blah, blah. Was there today. I didn't like how it happened and I ran for office. I'm not gonna sit here and have a, a double standard for you than I would for myself. So I, I, I hope you understand that, but with what I, I'm seeing here and the intent and the design, I think it can be win-win for everyone. Um, is, is it unfortunate that it's in that spot? Maybe. We'll, we'll know. It's kinda, we had the same discussion ever, ever for the last two months, how bad our new, uh, income tax agency is that's collecting taxes. Yet no one's really been able to point to a problem. But they think that there could be one, so they just say that this is gonna be a problem. I, I understand looking at this out, out of a, what could happen. But our job is to, to protect that and I hope you could see from the last meeting and the last month leading up to it, that if we think there's a problem, we're gonna deal with it regardless of who it is.
I appreciate it, 'cause I just do. There's John, one party, you. I appreciate, cause I see it. There's John, one party, you, there's a second party, and there's a third party, and that's the neighbors. Right, so there's three. There's, there's a win and a win.
There's a fourth. There's the whole city.
Right, yeah.
And, and, and to his point, the premise, the premise of my comment was in favor of, in favor of me, really. If you think about it, that's because I, I wouldn't, I, quite frankly, I've never been back there. I drive by six times a day and look at the beauty of it from the street. But if I lived in your houses, I wouldn't want that either. But I think by standards about what, what was presented, what brought us to this point, he, he answered that bell. And so I think with what he's gonna do, and if he says, if he does it correctly, and I think it could help protect some of the concerns and the half of towns of, of last summer. I, I, I really do. I have that, that thought.
There's two ways to look at it. It can be a private thing that people continually show up at anyway, right? Even if we tell them not to and police it twenty-four hours a day. Uh, or we can do something like this where you don't have to live with the problem of it because it's at least covered. And, and it's not just a parking lot. This is, it's beautiful. I mean, what, what-
It's beautiful.
What he submitted, I can't even fathom what that brick wall would cost to do. Can't, I can't imagine.
I mean, I know the downtown, the doctor package. This was like, wow. I mean-
I don't know if you can see from now, but it's-
My, my last meeting was like, and what we thought in our package, I was, you know, like-
And, and kinda my first few sentences, it's residents of that street. What, what would I be wanting if this is, if this is gonna move forward? What would be a restriction I would like? Okay? Let's, let's understand it and, and deal with the technicalities, okay? Maybe as citizens, you say, "You know what? We like the dusk to dawn, okay? We also want signs to say, 'No parking on side of streets,' okay? That's something that's important to us." And that restricts the flow down the street like you said in that parking lot, okay? And that is how I'd approach it, okay? And, and approach it from a positive aspect of things we would like to see as a group, as, as, as citizens that live on Stanton Avenue.
I'm not, I'm not sure we, we can do exactly that because, you know, basically, in their game, we don't want a ton of strangers in our neighborhood.
I understand.
And I don't know how you say, well, you can have ten people come in at a time, you know? It's just-
But you can let, things move on. I mean, because you bought a house fifty years ago. And it's beautiful, but it's hardly any place stays-
But I, I don't see, if you look at that, how that's gonna take away from it.
Yeah.
I lived on Northwest Street a long time ago. And there's a, there's a chunk of property behind all these properties, okay? That a guy wanted to build a bunch of row houses down the middle. It was, it was a sad section. It's on Northwest that way. And a lot of the neighborhood, including myself, fought it, okay? But we fought it with hate. And so what we did, we, he had, was right to build it. And he built it and he built one duplex. Instead of even building six or eight or ten. So you have to, you have to address it with understanding the code, what your concerns are, okay? And, and do the best you can. Cause as, as plaintiffs, we're supposed to follow the code, okay? And listen to the residents and all that. So develop a plan as a, as plaintiffs, we'd do best for the community, best for the residents, best for everything. Develop a plan of what you would like to see, okay? If this is what you have to live by.
Can, will there, or can there be restrictions as far as noise? Noise is, is an issue.
Yeah. Well, we already have that. Well, we, we already have noise orders to-
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, which is-
You do?
Super big. But, you know, it, it's an annoyance to some, some of the neighbors. And, and, well, oh, I'm sorry. Let me mention one more thing.
Okay.
Up, upkeep, just because it's not, you know, some of the sanctuary and stuff like that, things constructed do require upkeep and are already showing somewhere. I guess I'd like to see some kind of restriction or, you know, plan for addressing definite upkeep because you don't want it to exist for two or three years and then-
I don't know.
But it's, it goes through your house. Oh, yeah, certainly. I mean, we can't come out to your house and say- But if it's the public- Anywhere, or-
You know, it's a quality, it's-
Oh, but, well, I mean, these are questions. I'm not being hostile.
What, what it says is audio, visual, and pride gun standards.
To do during the hearing.
Okay.
Cause we're gonna do this again.
He should actually hear that.
What, what you should do is go to all the, get what the requirements are, okay? And go through them and understand them and come to that meeting.
Come on, they am legal.
Yeah.
What they, and, and because we-
They am legal and all the words.
You can say something tonight that, and I, I don't remember it, that you're, you're gonna get mad at me.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I-
You come with what you, with, what you want us to hear so we can factor all that in. Because if it's, uh, uh, the hours that need to be addressed and things of that nature, we can do that that night. I mean, I'm not gonna do it right now with him not here. I'm not gonna do it with the rest of the neighbors not being invited.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna do it twice. It's a waste of time. And it, and I don't mean that in a negative way. I just don't wanna do it twice.
Is it better to write a letter so that nobody, like with bullet points?
Well, you have to go through this, what it says with the allowances. And it talks about EPA noise standards. It talks about all that in the code. You have to understand that a little bit. It's, it's not real big. It's pretty small. And understand what you're, and they come to the meeting and go through those items.
Well, well, I can tell you that with what he submitted, it means everything.
One thing that I'm gonna add, and that is a conditional zoning certificate is subject to review. And we talked about upkeep. You'll hear that again. If you read the code, you'll see that. It has to come back to planning commission for review. It's not just-
Every year?
Is it every year?
Yes.
Every year?
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, I think, if you're looking for, how do you police what happens after conditional zoning certificate is granted? Does that, the applicant has to come back on a yearly basis?
Oh, I didn't know that. Yeah, I didn't realize it was every year.
Yeah.
Well, having said all that, I guess I just wanted you to know that there is a large contingency of statements and manner that aren't happy with what has happened and aren't happy with what is being proposed, possibly even with a parking lot. So we'll gather our folks and we'll come and see you at the meeting and-
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, I think it's a good idea. But Dave, kinda talk to the people. I mean, if they're reasonable requests, because I am not sure, like, a group of people just coming and jumping on somebody because-
Oh, no. We would, nobody would do that. But you gotta realize what we went through and-
Later, I can imagine.
And, and, and if, if, if you, if you put in that little parking lot with all the nineteen cars, okay? And if you make this public, what we have, triple it, quadruple it, because that's what's gonna come.
Well, I don't know if we've ever had really, other than football games, we don't have sixteen cars in Firestone Park at one time, let alone that little place.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, I'm gonna have people do about it this summer. And if you open it up to the whole group, now you're gonna have exponential people coming.
Deal with what's in here, okay? And we can deal back with it. But we can't deal with, like Mayor Ryan said, you just can't, I said.
Yeah, like we can't.
I know it's gonna be passionate. I know someone's not gonna be up, up, they're gonna be upset. Someone's not gonna be happy. If, if, um, I get my way, it will be those of you. Because if, if you don't get everything he wants, if he doesn't get everything he wants, I don't know.
That's the end deal.
I mean, there, there is not gonna be one person walking out of here going, "I want it." I promise. Because if he meets the code and he's willing to invest his own money, um, who are we to tell him to know if it, if it fits?
Well, that's, that's why I asked him, because you even told him specifically, you have two options. You can make this just like it's been and leave it alone, or you can open it up to the whole world.
But you can hear his, his desires.
Right.
He said it to you.
You see, we would like it to just be the way it is.
I know that's his preference. That's how this works.
Yep.
Uh, in, in my perfect world, I wouldn't have a parking lot extended in front of my house with a banquet center either. But I do. And I, I've moved on from it. A hundred cars of a summer bed. Not only that, I don't have a decorative wall or any landscaping to present my view of it. Who will?
Danny, does anybody have a case in?
So on a one other thing, if everyone hasn't seen it yet on YouTube, the H D T V Town Makeover video, check it out. It's, it's amazing. Don Arkers and Eric Ottenberg did it.
Really cool.
But it's, how many times has it been viewed now?
Fifty-nine hundred so far. We've gone to meetings, though.
Yeah, Dan and I watched it with the audience.
Yeah. Five thousand nine.
He's twenty pounds. He's not watching now.
Okay. Well, if not hearing any other public comments, I'm gonna move over to you.